Welcome, everybody, to our meeting tonight. We're going to open with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we get into our approval of the minutes, I'd just like to take a moment of silence for the one standing member of the community, Mrs. Patricia Fogarty. Thank you, everybody. Approval of minutes, we have the October - is there a motion to approve the October 15, 2019 executive session meeting minutes?
So move to second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved, five to zero. Is there a motion to approve the November 6, 2019 work session meeting minutes?
So move to second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion approved, five to zero. Motion to approve the November 18, 2019, executive session meeting minutes?
So move to second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion approved, five to zero. And finally, our motion to approve our December 9, 2019, executive session meeting minutes?
So move to second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved, five to zero. Next, we have our consent agenda. Is there any item that a member of the council would like to remove from our consent agenda? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move to second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, five to zero. Item - new business. Item number 11. Motion to approve the replacement of one firefighter due to retire.
So move to second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion approved, five to zero.
All right.
Item 12. Is this a motion to move item number 23 up to be the next item on the agenda?
So move to second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved. Item 23. A motion to adopt an emergency ordinance providing for a moratorium on building and development under the provisions of Section 2-1-9B of the Town Charter.
So move to second.
Discussion? This item comes from Mr. Lima. I do know that there - before we get into that, Mr. Lima wanted to go to the town solicitor regarding a possible amendment that we discovered regarding state law.
So Mark, can you explain, actually, what we're able to do here with the possibility that people will still hear to do remodeling?
Okay, there are two pieces. Before we get into a variation of what was proposed, I had a conversation with Steve Marsala this morning, actually, this afternoon, and he had been speaking with Jill from the planning department. And the way Section 4 was drafted on the ordinance, it created a conflict with state law. So Section 4, I handed out right before the meeting, suggested change whereby we would be striking reference to the Planning Board, the Zoning Board Review, and the Zoning Board sitting in its capacity as the Planning Board of Appeal. We would strike reference to those bodies, and we would qualify the application by inserting the words "any new or incomplete applications." And the reason for that is that the way this was drafted, it prevented the Planning Board and the other boards from sitting and hearing matters for a period of 60 days. And state law provides that if there is something before the Planning Board that has not acted on within 90 days, then it's deemed approved. So we have matters that have been before the Planning Board, and if we sit out the 60 days, they just default to being approved. And that's not - it's not something we want to do. We don't want to basically negate the ability of the Planning Board and the Zoning Board to make the appropriate decisions. So that's a necessary modification that needs to be made. Rick, what you were referring to is in sustaining Section 4, it's a prohibition on any construction, is the way it's drafted now. And, you know, we've - I've heard all sorts of suggestions, from emergency repairs to renovations to additions, and it starts getting very complicated with trying to define what those things actually are, who makes the determination. And so, in my opinion, Steve Marsala's opinion, the simplest way to address this is to qualify any construction and limit that to any new construction, which I think is the crux of it. So roof repairs, kitchen remodels, I mean, really, anything that's not new construction would be a lot. That would be, I think, administratively, the easiest way to - and the cleanest way to move forward, and it certainly then would impact people who are making improvements for ADA compliance or, you know, updating their house.
So what I'll do is, the first of those you discussed, if a council member wants to make a motion for an amendment which would reflect the first item, which was the reflection of state law, and that's in front of all of us, and...
I'll make that a motion.
A second.
Right, so that motion is - to amend the underlying motion, it would remove in Section 4 the phrase from the Planning Board that reads "the Planning Board's only board of review, the zoning board of review acting in its capacity as planning board of appeal," and then it would add the language after "upon any - upon," it would say, "any new or incomplete application." Right, so that's what that's doing there. So then, what I'll do is, we'll turn it over now to Mr. Lima, because it was your original, and then we'll vote - we have to vote on that amendment, maybe a future amendment, but turn it over to you for the underlying item.
So again, I put this motion in basically because for the last 20 years, at least, if you don't even want some people who haven't lived here, construction in neighborhoods, where we have our ten zoning residential, there are houses that are going up, they become multi-bedroom units, and neighborhoods are upset. Neighborhoods are upset. They've been speaking on it long before I got elected, and for me, I just felt that something had to be done, and now we're implementing this proposal and this ordinance, and we're going to sit down and we're going to go over everything, and we have a timeframe, and it's going to be a tough timeframe, because there's a lot that goes on. But we want to be able to give people in this town, no matter where you live, I didn't pick out a specific area or a street or any of that, I looked at the town as a whole, and we want people to have a residential neighborhood with a quality of life. So this is why I put this out there.
Is there any other commentary from the council?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I agree with Ricky on this one. This is something that multiple council members have been speaking to the solicitor about working on emergency ordinance like this. The order - this emergency ordinance is not the solution, and that is just a way to get to a solution, because I think, you know, most people up here and a lot of people in town understand that seeing dormitories go up in small streets in residential areas is not something that's a sustainable occurrence, and it's valuable to the town or to the people that live in town. So we need to fix our zoning and our building codes to really get rid of these loopholes, because these are not structures that should be built in neighborhoods. So I'm behind this as well. You know, I think we definitely want to amend this further to add, you know, to add the new construction clause or wording. I guess my only question would be, and maybe it really doesn't matter, because it's only 60 days, but I'm assuming new construction would still ban smaller outbuildings and things that are not really...
Is this one?
Yeah, so like, you know, someone was going to put up a shed, they wouldn't be able to do that. I mean, it's a minor inconvenience, I guess, for at least 60 days, but I'm just wondering if it's worth adding other word - wording as well to cover those things, or just say, hey, you got to wait till the spring for that, so...
Yeah, so I think in a lot of cases, especially this time of the year, trying to excavate, you know, so with some shed type work, the shed has to be grounded so that, again, it's hurricane-proof and all of that, so I don't see a lot of that happening now, and we're looking by March, hopefully, to have this, you know, settled out and people can continue. But we're not looking to put any contractors out of business. You'll still be able to do remodeling, and I think that that is important. But the rest of it, we need to put the brakes on, and it's been long overdue.
Anyone else from the council?
I'm also in agreement with this. Thanks, Rick, for doing this. Open that maybe Jim can shed a little light on the process. I know you mentioned there'll be public hearings, there'll be opportunity for people to speak on this, it's just not going to be something that the council will just bring. Can you talk to - mention to town about what your thoughts process are as far as how this will roll out?
Give us two months to address the zoning laws and the building codes in town and the building department and the community development, really going to be under the gun over the next couple of months, but we will have to rewrite a significant portion of it to address situations that have come up in neighborhoods where two homes have proposed, eight bedrooms in each home, and there's a potential of 32 people who are all living in them, perhaps maybe 32 vehicles, so you can see how this would impact the neighborhood. So we have a timeline to get this done, and we'll work with the solicitor and community development and buildings, and we'll listen to the people to clarify what they want.
The other thing that I just wanted to - it's also something the zoning board was looking for. I testified at a zoning board hearing not long ago, and one of the members, I believe it was Mr. Kennedy, we were asking - the people testifying were asking the zoning board to act, and his response back was, they're within the law, we need to change the law. So that's what we're addressing now, to be able to help the zoning board make some important decisions, but even they recognize we need to change the law.
Patrick?
Yeah, I can - I'm glad to see the town has amended this broad, rushed approach of banning all permits, so we're glad we amended that just to centralize it.
Did we add...
A motion to approve.
Yeah.
I'm a property rights guy, as I've been saying, and I'm all on board with property rights, but when it starts infiltrating and encroaching on somebody else's property rights, then something needs to be done. So I can support this. The town manager has suggested that new construction, temporary ban, permits, so we can cobble together some kind of ordinance to get a handle on this. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to turn it over to the public.
I just want to add one more thing about the emergency ordinance, because I know it can seem possibly to some people like this is an extreme measure. It is something that's actually fairly common, if you look around the country and even in Rhode Island. So Newport just did a six-month moratorium on new development in the north end of town, Montgomery County, Maryland. They did a one-year moratorium on all new residential building. We have areas down in South Carolina that have done the same. They've done it for multifamily structures. Where else? Florida, multiple towns in Florida have done the same thing. A lot of times, it's the same impetus for doing this. It's these really large structures going up that are not really residential. They are because there's people living, residents living in them, but they're really commercial ventures. And so we're not doing anything that isn't being done in other places. And again, it is just a way to get to a more permanent solution, so I just wanted to make that happen.
And we've done it in the past, who was, I believe, Jim was telling me, in the late 80s, we put a moratorium on when the condominiums were starting to develop.
All right, I'm going to turn it over to the public.
Carleen Townwood Young Road. We all sympathize with the gentleman who came before you at the last town council meeting to beg you to put a stop to the construction of these mega houses, built with the intent of renting to as many as eight unrelated students with all their guests and cars. I myself have neighbors across the street who live in Pennsylvania but rent their home on home way. That house is a three-bedroom. One weekend, there were 18 cars parked on the lawn, so no parking violation. We neighbors watched as sleeping bags were brought into the house. It was rented to someone who was conducting business meetings, training people in what I think is called a pyramid business, for selling essential oils at home parties, sort of like Tupperware parties. Concerned that the house was being overloaded, I called my neighbor in Pennsylvania and told her jokingly that I was her septic system watchdog and feared that 18 or more people, because it was not one person, her cop, would tax her septic tank and leach field. To make the long story short, she said she was not aware that the sales pitch to so many was reason for the rental. She said she would vet her renters more carefully in the future. Although I sympathize with anyone dealing with the intrusive nature of these one-to-two-night rentals, or even the entire semester rentals by URI students in one-family neighborhoods, I don't believe that the town needs to enact a moratorium on building and development. Now, granted, I wrote this before you just made your amendments. I think the town needs to enforce its own laws to prevent these eight-bedroom rooming houses, constructed with building permits for a one-family unit, from being erected in residential neighborhoods. Instead of a total moratorium, that would adversely affect those who - people who want to put an addition on because of an expanding family, or who have bought property and want to build their truly one-family dream house, because perhaps it's time to enforce what is already on the books, that being Section 2.2 of Section 2 of the zoning ordinance that defines what a single-family dwelling is. If you want to make a new law, I think it should be that anyone who violates the zoning laws should not get a slap on the wrist, but should be fined well over and above any income derived from the illegal use of that property. I understand your amendments, and I agree, but I think there might be some problems and unnecessary hardship on people who have legitimate reasons to build at this time. One final note, Ricky's motion, as written, could put us into another costly legal battle with builders and homeowners, and smacks more of campaigning for the next election on his part than genuine concern for the welfare of this town. Thank you.
Ooh. Good journey.
I have proposed a solution many times. I'll do it again. Anyone who rents a house is in a business and automatically gets the 140% rate for the taxes. Now, at the planning level, that will stop some people, because you might not have the problem economically violated and going to pay significantly more in property taxes. And yet, council after council has said, well, we don't want to do that. Well, this is how to stop it, at the planning level. So the person who's planning these esparaves in a house will realize that there is an additional cost, property taxes, based on what these properties are, their businesses.
Thank you, yes, sir.
Thank you. My name's Bob Chartrane. Sorry to delay my first town council meeting in my life.
Oh, love them.
Thank you. Well, I agree with the spirit of what, you know, is trying to be done. I am actually going to beg the council to not approve this motion as it's currently defined, even with the amendments you had. I may be unintended, or maybe - I could be severely punished by this, while I think it could happen. I am really just a single-family, three-bedroom, three-bath. I'm days away from submitting all of my paperwork for a permit. In my neighborhood, there's, you know, you can't rent anywhere and stop my goal. My goal is to find and build my dream house here in the area, Kansas. And but there is a potential penalty where if you don't start soon enough, I could see things such as - as extreme as losing my life, not to mention what's - I mean, I've already closed my construction loan, and there's penalties there with this timeframe for everything. You know, the intent is for these six-bedroom houses or more that are clogged up in neighborhoods, and I fully agree with that part, because I drive by and I see that and stuff. That's not what I'm doing. And, you know, it's even mentioned in the fire marshal's letter, you know, Section D in the agenda here tonight, but Section 4, as I pointed out, is really a blanket statement. And if it goes through as a blanket statement, I'm not going to be able to start building my house, and I could see penalties as much as losing everything. And I don't know how - I wouldn't want to be in - basically in charge of somebody's financial room because of a moratorium on the building, when I'm not actually even the target of the intent of this motion. And I can only, I guess, really only consider changing this motion to not be a blanket on all new construction, but as the woman before me had said, it seems that there are already some ways that you can - with reviewing, I mean, I'm doing a little permit, you see how many bedrooms, you see all these things. A big red flag is an eight-bedroom house with no bedrooms or closets or something whatever, that's kind of - I think that there already be ways to manage it, and not being like somebody that we were just trying to build their single-family house, zero intent, right? In fact, these restrictions I can't run, and that's fine, because I don't want to be able to do those things. But as it's written now, I'm in a very bad spot. I really would hope that you reconsider how this is written, so I can go forward and build my house.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
David Rudy, 125 Caswell. Wasn't planning on to begin this, but as someone who lives in a pure area next to a six-bedroom raised ranch that has had six students in it for the past four years during the school season, and a family that owns the property there in the summer, I can tell you, we actually find that the kids are quieter than the people that live there, but that's a separation. We looked at that property and asked what kind of problems there are with kids renting, students renting, and the answer came back that once a year in May, there's a party there, and it gets a little bit louder. Well, end of the school year, we can deal with that. The landlord is very diligent. The rental agreement calls for expulsion if they get a red sticker. The past two years, we've had the police come, and they have unloaded the house from about 50 to 100 kids. It wasn't out of control, but it was definitely something that doesn't belong in a residential neighborhood. I'd like to support the lady who was here a couple of speakers ago, saying this is an enforcement issue. I can't imagine why, with 30 people in a three-bedroom house, the fire code wouldn't be violated, that the noise ordinance wouldn't at least pique someone's interest, and that parking would be allowed. So again, is this an enforcement issue? As someone who finished their basement, I can see where someone could easily finish a basement, put three bedrooms downstairs and three bedrooms on the first floor, and have a six-bedroom rooming house. This is an enforcement issue, and you can deal with the corporate rooming house through different avenues than shutting off all building permits, and I agree with the gentleman before. I think this opens the town up to lawsuits from the gentleman who just spoke, costing him money and having this council have to hire our town solicitor's organization once again, and spending town money needlessly for like poorly drafted ordinance. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
No.
Gary Ward, Tobago Trail. I own a lot at Tobago Trail, 100 miles, double plot building. For three years, I've been going back and forth trying to get a hookup to a sewer, which is 18 feet from my property. Constantly told, no, no, no. Now that I enter the town, I look out on the street, and I see this 800-plus connection with the Bonner Shore Beach Club. On one summer, they're going to use more than I've used in 18 - in 30 years. Now you're telling me now it's going to start pulling my houses here, I'm retiring. Now I'm being told that I'm not a parable. I don't know what's going on in this town. It's no, no, no. Luke Cameron?
Is there anyone else? Yes, Carol.
Just add one thing, Matt. I know Rick's ordinance is for 60 days, but I do believe that it is hope and our town's hope that we'll be able to do it much quicker, correct? I mean, so we could actually expect this in a month. I know this would be - Mr. DeLucas would be the speaker project, I don't know if they're going to leave the town hall, but we're aiming to beat that 60-day correction.
He'll be the number one for Har- it'll be the number one for Harriet. All right, go ahead, Carol.
Good evening, Carol Stewart, Australian American. Listening to what I heard, and I obviously was late, I did hear something before I left on television. The motion is for the referendum to put a hold on development of lots, and however, now three people are bringing up issues of students and a lot of other things into this motion. And as I read the background material that was provided, and I was very impressed with the background material, I was impressed with the details and the clarity of the facts presented by the fire marshal, as well as the information provided under the charter that the last several pages, because it's been a number of years that I have worked on these issues along with committees, other people, neighborhood associations. And so I see a mix and a conflict in some of the potential for where people seem to think this is going. The - our rentals and the number of bedrooms are an issue to me, because when houses are purchased, they're to be rented, not lifted by families or single people, but by students. And the first thing they do, and I call them predatory investors, because that's the majority of them who have taken over the rental properties in our town, they add more bedrooms. So I have an eight-bedroom house across the street from the, I call it the boutique hotel, and then there's a seven-bedroom a block away, and the front lawn is covered with parking and cars, et cetera. And so there are violations taking place, and these places do have to be reclassified as suggested by the... as suggested by, uh, the fire marshal. Also could be called dormitories, which the town of Smithfield did years ago because of the Bryan University, um, rental issue. However, at the same time, if ordinances are instituted, which then take into consideration the number of violations that are currently in place in these properties, then the town will be able to address the affordable housing issue, keep full-time residents homes lean, uh, young families and singles will be able to purchase. The real estate prices are out of control as revealed by some statistics that I received from a realtor about the increase in the, um, purchase of houses in Maragans and-
Carol.
-and the prices. So therefore, my contention is that either you're dealing with the moratorium or you're dealing with violations that need to be controlled by relabeling when what these houses are, which are single family homes.
Thank you, Carol. And before going forward, you'll see at eight o'clock, we have, um, it's a, but it's a public hearing at eight o'clock. So a public hearing, we're going to come back to this anyways. Um, it's only a motion to schedule, um, a public hearing. This item though, um, this is scheduling of an ordinance and I, I don't know who's here on this item.
Can I just speak for a second?
No, not yet, not yet.
No, for the last thing?
Not yet, not yet. Sorry, let me just, it's two seconds, let me get through this. But I want to apologize to town for miscommunication on this motion to schedule a public hearing. This was regarding recreational vehicle heights, um, but what it also now includes is information about length of boats. So unless the council wants to go forward with it, the planning board won't be meeting again until February nineteenth, I think we should kind of start this from scratch. This is about recreational vehicles and I was hoping that we could just withdraw this motion to schedule and not go forward with the hearing on this is, um, unless the council, if anyone's uncomfortable with that.
Well, um, I'm not totally comfortable with that. I was under the impression that, um, this was going to go to planning and then there's going to be a lot of discussion and amendments, um, to what's in there. There's really no intent to change anything for boats, as you mentioned.
But it, but it's in the ordinance right now.
Yeah, but, uh, I think Jim, didn't you just, we, we received an email from Jim saying that this, um, amended this updated ordinance is basically a combination of a few different things that throughout, through the process of the, uh, you know, the discussions and the meetings with planning, we'll be editing that down to what we're intending, which is just for RV height, um, increase. So instead of delaying it-
So I can, I can look for a motion withdrawal, we can, I can read off the motion-
Well, can I just get a quick-
-schedule it.
Excuse me, excuse me.
I'll put out the motion, I mean, it says what you want. I was, I was thinking-
I'm just going to keep talking for a second. Thank you. Um, Jim, do you mind, um, reiterating what you sent us today in your email?
The, the draft was prepared by Brent in community development and it's basically an amalgamation of several other communities' ordinances. And he actually went from basically above and beyond, he did a very thorough job of it, uh, but it goes forward just to try to get the ball rolling before, uh, before the sun burns upon us. And with a public hearing, you can, community development and the council can, uh, can amend it as they wish.
So we can get, we can take all of, any boat restriction or any additional restrictions to any boat ownership or storage can be taken out through the process.
The council, the assistance it solicited, has the ability to amend any ordinance, yes.
So we wouldn't, we could just, I, my concern is just pushing this back and delaying, you know, we're trying to get that RV height increase, um, and nobody wants to do anything with boats, so we could just take all the boat-
Why don't we, why don't we cut to the chase? Is, is there consensus here to get an RV in your yard up to fifteen feet? Right now it's what, twelve and a half feet, twelve feet?
Nine.
Nine! Who the hell has an RV that's nine feet? Okay?
I'm going to look, I, we either can make, if you, I'll make them look, we can read off the, if you want to have scheduling a public hearing. I was looking for a motion to withdraw this item so we could fix it so that it doesn't include the boats.
Well, I think I can, I think I can agree with you on withdrawing the whole workshop. If everybody has consensus on raising the height of an RV in the yard to fifteen feet.
Which is what? We were going to have a new attachment, so that's why-
If we get a consensus here, we're just having a gentle item on the next meeting. Altering the ordinance and no workshop, there's no boats or anything else, just cut to the chase.
Okay, so we're going to withdraw this item tonight, all right? Based on that, I just want to inform everybody of that, if they had come for that, all right? And now we're going to return to item number twenty-three. All right, thank you.
Rick Carroll over there, right? Fifteen feet? Okay, that's great. Okay, good.
All right, yes. Item number twenty-three.
Okay, thanks, I'm sorry, I'm just talking trash. Um, I was a builder and, uh, I know when you go to get a permit, the, uh, the parking is based on bedrooms. So for every bedroom you have, you have to have two off-street parking, parking spotters. So if you build a three bedroom house, you have to have six parking spotters. So if you put eighteen cars in the yard and you only have room for six, you call the police and you say they got eighteen cars parked in there. And then, uh, parking in the parking area. What, what could be easier than that? So you're going to knock, this guy that wants to build a house, what are you going to do? Make him wait a year? Because if you put a moratorium on building, I'm locked, he's got, he wants to build a family house, three bedroom house, he's got all s- six off-street parking. So, I mean, it's easy, simple, you know? I don't know, I, I think the, the big problem is, uh, you have to put a moratorium on something. And, I don't know, it, no one built a great ranch with fourteen bedrooms or whatever, thirty parking, uh, thirty kids living in it and forty cars, that's, that's an exaggeration of everything, whatever. If they come to stay for the night, they park on the grass, you're not going to designate the area, you're knocking on the doors, they get, move the car, you're going to get a ticket, move the car or park on top of your friend's car. But, uh, you don't need to put a moratorium, you're just going to get off the grass. So, and there was something else I was going to say, but it kind of jogged my mind as I was coming over because I was thinking about all the stuff I found around town about you for how we-
But that's not happened yet.
Uh, what else, what else is the problem?
Well, what do you have to say about the, um, so the moratorium, you would say, you don't think there's a need for the moratorium?
No, I'm, I'm just getting a point for it. We already got, when you go to get a building permit and you want to build a three bedroom house, you have to have six off-street parking. If you want to build four, you're going to have eight. If you want to build two, you're going to have at least two, well, four. So, I mean, it's already in place, you don't need anything. Just going to enforce it. Go down to use with books, take it off the grass, you're going to get a ticket. Can't park on the road, can't park on the road, whatever. It's not a big deal. I mean, you're going to punish a guy that wants to move into town, build a house because it's a moratorium on it. It's ridiculous. Ridiculous. Someone wants to put a, uh, addition on their house with adding four bedrooms to it, but then they've got a parking area for three bedrooms, well, you can't do it. Unless you want to put your whole yard in a parking lot. That's it.
Thank you. Fred, yes?
My name is Robin Leclair, Maragans resident. I'm also a realtor and I work with a lot of investors. My first question is, you say that you want to get to this right way. Could it go past sixty days? Could it go past sixty days into the summertime?
Emergency ordinance is sixty days.
Okay, so it can't be extended?
I believe it can be extended once for thirty days.
So potentially ninety days?
But I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Okay, so potentially ninety days. This could be extended. To me, this is another attempt at, because the no more than four, no more than four unrelated did not go through and it was proved, proven unconstitutional, this to me seems like a second attempt at stopping more building for possible student and summer rentals. Yes, I agree with the eight bedrooms, going on a dead end, with the fire safety, not being able to go right through, yes, that's an issue, but that's what we have to work on. As far as one of my clients that I just sold a property to that wants to live here for his dream house that is under a construction loan time limit, he's going to get penalized. And I've been through that and I know that that's very costly. So I would really hope that, you know, this, there's answers to this as soon as possible because it is affecting a lot of our lives, including my profession as a realtor.
The first thing we have is that amendment, so, and then we have another amendment after that, so.
I have one more question for Mark. Mark, is there any way we can whittle down that ordinance, four bedrooms and over? Now I'll take care of these two gentlemen.
Um, I consulted with, you know, Steve and we talked about it a lot.
More than four bedrooms?
You, you can do anything you want. We know that, and you can ask Tony, um, but there are many people who go seek a permit to build a three bedroom home and then, um, have this expansive living area or break room and then the minute it's up, they divide it and, you know, call it another three or four bedrooms. So, um, I think it would, um, it would be easy to circumvent the purpose of the moratorium, but you can do anything you want. The, the goal here was, is explained by the, the people seeking it was to try to, for the immediate future, put a thing, put a halt to new construction so that zoning and, um, and building can, uh, put the appropriate, um, safeguards in place to the extent that, um, that they're available. So, um, it, it's a very complicated matter. Um, it is, you know, we have, uh, rooming house ordinance, it doesn't address the problem. We have boarding house, it doesn't address the problem. We have parking, it doesn't address the problem. Uh, there is no effective way to enforce it at this point. It just simply, there is no enforcement ability from town's part. So, uh, it's a complicated problem and, you know, as Mike DeLuca has stated, that, you know, you put something in place without a lot of thought, you can have ratifications, unintended ratifications and consequences. So, um, there are just, there are going to be people affected here, uh, they spoke out. I mean, there is no easy solution here. It's complicated and there are a lot of moving pieces. So, yes, you want to limit it to three, but it wouldn't stop somebody who wants to build an eight bedroom, applying for a three bedroom home and then just buy a eight bedroom.
Or would they have to redo all the plans?
Um, they would, they would lead the expansive areas open.
I'm wanting to take, I'm wanting to take the word of these two gentlemen, if they want to build a three or four bedroom house, I think we should whittle down this ordinance. More than four bedrooms. No.
We're going to do this first amendment. If somebody wants to talk on this amendment right now because we're going to have a second amendment, you've already spoken on, uh, you will, you'll be able to, but let me, let me get through, right, let me get, let me get through, let me get through this, okay? We've got the first amendment on. So, um, if anyone wants to speak to that from the public who hasn't spoken, okay? So this first amendment that was brought up at the, at the beginning is going to have section four read for the period of sixty days following the passage of this ordinance, all town agencies and all town employees shall either accept, process, approve, deny, or in any way act upon any newer incomplete application, plan, permit, license, and/or fee for any construction or use governed by this emergency ordinance for said period of time. So, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, that's motion approved five to zero. So then, is there a second amendment that somebody wants to make regarding the new construction issue?
So I make that motion.
And, Mark, do you have language on that, that you'll be able to walk us through?
It, it's as simple as inserting "new" in between the words "any" and "construction".
In section four?
In section four.
Okay.
And unless you decide that you want to be more specific with what construction will be allowed.
Okay, so this would be amending section four and it, and it would now read at the end for any new construction or use governed by this emergency ordinance. Is there a second for that amendment?
Second.
All right, so discussion on that, just going to ask the council first of all and then go to the public, right? Anybody from the council want to speak to that before I go to the public?
Just a quick question, um, I don't know if Mark or, or maybe Mike DeLuca might be the best person to ask for this, but it seems everyone really is interested in the time component that is a big part of this, how quickly can we get it done? Are there consultants out there that we could hire on to help, Mike, so that we can expedite the process and beat that sixty day deadline down as low as possible that often?
I, I would defer to Jim and, and Mike on that and I think, um, I don't think it's as quick as, as everyone would like it to be. I think, um, the solutions have to be identified, vetted, um, and then once that's, that's done, of course, you have the notices, the drafting, um, the readings and the adoption. So, um, just by definition, you know, if you're trying to expedite an ordinance, it's generally two meetings, which is a month. Um, and like I said, there are a lot of moving pieces here. So, um, you know, Mike and Jill can probably speak to how quickly they think they can come up with good, good suggestions for, um, for the town council to consider.
And I'm happy to, and I'll have to see what everyone else here says, well, if you need some help, um, I'm happy to go to, to bring in a consultant to help you guys out.
One thing on this, um, issue, we will call special meetings if necessary to have first and second readings of ordinance changes that are proposed by the working group of staff that's going to put this together. And at some point, if, we're going to have to have those hearings. So if, if that's necessary, we will call special meetings for that effect. Does anyone else from the council? All right, yes.
Okay. There is already stuff in place to protect all this kind of stuff, you don't need to do anything. Somebody gets a permit, builds a three bedroom house with thousand, million foot rooms, they have to have a four foot opening and they have to have no closets. Anytime after they get their CO, the building inspector can come back and go into that house and make sure that there's no beds, no closet, no doors, as simple as that. You've got eighteen cars in the, in the yard, call up the town, saying, I think they got five bedrooms instead of three. It's already in place, you don't need nothing. It's already there. That's it, you don't need nothing. I've been building a house for thirty years, I know all that stuff. You can't do it, you get a permit with three bedrooms, you get three bedrooms. You say you've got an office, you say you've got a family room, you say you've got this, you say you've got that. Tony or whoever goes in, he sees the four foot opening and no closet, whatever, they bring in an omelette. At any time after that, he can make your point, whatever, go back in that house, make sure there's no doors on there, no closets, no walls knocked down, no nothing, no walls added. It's already in place, I don't know why you're making such a big deal about nothing. All it takes is a phone call. You're wasting a lot of energy on nothing. It's already there. Mr. Santos will tell you, you can't do it, you can't do it, it's a law. So you don't have to do anything. Guy wants to build a five bedroom house, he's going to have ten off-street parking, he's going to have five bedrooms. He wants to have a twenty by eight bedroom room, after you leave, he wants to divide it up. Can't do it. Neighbor sees it, sees the guy's over there working on the house, call up, Tony comes in, says, "Ooh, out."
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thanks for letting me speak again.
Just restate your name and address.
Uh, my name is Bob Charter and I currently live in Massachusetts, hoping to move down here soon, build a new house, but I, I've been in South County for, um, thirteen years. Gentlemen, I'm sorry I don't make sense, I can't read your name, but, uh, very selfishly it's pure genius saying, you know, hey, what about four bedrooms and, and oil them down? And it's, that kind of solves my problem. Um, and I agree with you, you know, some of the comments have been made, you know, it's, it's, it is important, it's already, you know, the coast in place. I mean, I built a decker on a pool back when I lived in Wakefield and I forgot to have the guys come and inspect the depth at all. They go and, you know, dig a hole alongside every one of the solid tubes to prove the depth. I mean, if you build a, a three bedroom home and then suddenly you come back in and- I mean, if you build a, a three-bedroom home and then suddenly you come back in and it's all these other bedrooms, the town is going to tell them, take it all down. I mean, they would have made me take my whole deck down if I didn't show them, prove how deep those, those holes were. So everything's in place. And I don't know, I'm not a lawyer, but I don't know how a town can, you know, put something in place that's going to have such a significant financial impact. I mean, I, I haven't even had a chance to grasp what it's going to be, because I haven't had a chance to come back yet. I don't know what's going to happen. And in specific, in this, in my neighborhood, if I don't start construction in a certain amount of time, they can take my life back. This is devastating. This isn't a, you know, an issue of, you know, what it's addressed to be. And again, I think there's enforcement ways that are already in place to go and bust up, you know, 20 cars on a, on a front, to the front brass house, that doesn't basically have an opportunity to ruin my life. That's what's going to happen.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Councilman Stephen Ferardi, 44 Silken Road. Rick, I applaud you for putting this on because you are exactly right. This is something, you said around 20 years, it's probably about 25 to 30 years in the coming. I really don't think people, all the people in Narragansett understand how much this has really impacted the neighborhoods. Let's just go through a little scenario. You know, people have been trying to fight the rooming houses and water through the years. We've been getting beaten down in court, we've had other issues. But this is what happens not legally in the town. You can come in on a 50-by-100 lot, that's on sewers, put an eight-bedroom house up, basically call it a rooming board and you look at some of the ads, it looks like a hotel, okay? So all this is doing is the town, legitimate fire codes and things that really should have been going on the whole time, the last 25 years. So it's not drastic, it's something that really needs to be done because it's changing fabrics of neighborhoods. We can't get single-family people in here because investors beat you out on the property because of what they can do with the property. Eight-bedroom, seven-bedroom, rooming board, and all that, we've heard the stories before. So this is a good first step to say, stop, let's really take a look at this and start figuring out what is shooting big. And Rick, I applaud you again, and I really think that anybody that doesn't go for this ordinance isn't in Narragansett neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Yes, sir. This is Robin Leclair again, 27 Orlando Drive. Back to my client who has the construction loan over here, I mean, he is building in a neighborhood that has an HOA restrictions, okay, that won't allow him for rentals at all. So I'm trying to back him up because I sold him a piece of land, so maybe that could be one thing to put in the amendment, that if it's new construction in a development that, that, that has restrictions on certain things. And like he said, I mean, if he doesn't get going on building, I mean, he could lose, he could lose the land because that was part of the purchase and sales agreement that he signed, which is legally bound, that he had to build in a certain amount of time. That being said, as far as Mr. Ferardi that just spoke about the eight, seven, and eight bedrooms, first of all, I do understand that there has to be some kind of fire code, okay? If we have to put in sprinklers, a sprinkler system, or any kind of remote type of fire, firebox that's connected to the fire department, yes, that's a solution. I think that can be worked out sooner than later. You're not going to stop people from building seven and eight-bedroom houses in Narragansett. You're not going to stop it. You can fight all you want, you can delay the progress, but you're not going to stop it. If it's on town sewer, in town water, and you're with the building codes, and you're meeting all the requirements and the zoning ordinances, and you have a legally, you have a legally, legal area to build that house, and you get the proper permitting, I'm, I'm sorry, you're not going to stop that from happening. What's going to stop, what will stop the problems is having a property manager or a realtor or a, a responsible homeowner to be on top of those students, if it's a student rental, and to stop the problems, okay? That's what we're, that's what we are missing in this town. Because you have a lot of those, you have a lot of those houses in Eastwood Look where you have these out-of-state landlords that don't give a crap, but they just kept giving crap about the money, okay? Whereas you have someone like me, a very responsible Realtor slash property manager that is on top of the problem every single day, okay? So all I'm saying is, you can't stop the seven and eight-bedroom homes. As long as they are legal and meet the codes, that's how it's going to be.
Right, is there anyone else? Yes, Paul. Hold on for a little seven-minute circle. There is an emergency, that's why we need an emergency ordinance. And if somebody says, you're not going to stop the building of seven and eight-bedroom houses, that's the emergency. That's exactly what we keep hearing. What do you expect, you live in Narragansett? Don't expect residential property to be twisted into commercial. We don't, but, but it's kind of like blaming the victim, like we sort of deserve it, right? Because we live down here. When your house is burning down, you don't ask how much it costs to turn, to put it out, right? So unfortunately, it's a drastic measure, but it's needed because our ordinances are antiquated. And, you know, this, this previews the fight that's to come. This previews, you know, oh, my kids are great, right? Steve's looking at 16 bedrooms across the street, I don't think you see that in the pair very often, maybe you do, but everybody's going to say, oh, the kids next to me are fine. We're getting overrun because of the money. Now, as far as the gentleman put down the deposit, he doesn't know what his damage is going to be, he doesn't know. My suggestion is that you pass the ordinance and perhaps if there is a hardship basis, you can work with somebody on a hardship basis. But I would say that you don't delete the ordinance and we work with people if they need to be worked with, if somebody's really going to be hurt. But as Jesse well pointed out, these bands happen all the time. You know, perhaps the bank will take that into consideration, but, but the question is, like, where is it going to stop? This is going to stop the madness, this will put a halt on things. It is absolutely necessary because what we're doing is not working. And insanity is doing the same thing over and over again, expecting a different result. We've heard all these arguments before, just enforce the laws. Well, then how do you get 16 people coming to live in, in, in a residential district on an Airbnb or a summer rent? So I applaud Ricky for putting it on. I would say, don't water it down, and if there's people you need to work to on an individual basis, work on an individual basis rather than making an exceptional, more down tape. The solicitor did great work in putting this together. Take his recommendation, please pass it as this. Is there anyone else? No, you've spoken on the amendment, sorry, you were just spoken, is anyone else? All right, on this amendment, Ben, this is just adding the word "new". All in favor of this amendment?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion approved five to zero. And so now the underlying, I'm just going to reread how it's newly amended, so this is the, the attached ordinance in section four now we read, "for the period of 60 days following the passage of this ordinance, all town agencies and all town employees shall either accept process approved, deny, or in any way act upon any new or incomplete application, plan, permit, license, and/or fee for any new construction or use governed by this emergency ordinance for said period of time". So.
Yeah, I move, yeah, I move that we add and further whittle it down, more than four bedrooms.
All right, is there a second for that?
You know, I don't think, I don't think somebody is going to build a house.
If there's not a second, Patrick, if there's no second, there's no discussion. Is there a second? All right, hearing none. All right, is there, we're going to vote on the over, on the underlying ordinance, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved five to zero, thank you. All right, we're going back to item number 12, a motion to approve the request from URI Kappa Sigma Fraternity Kentucky Polar Plunge Military Heroes Campaign at the Town Beach on Sunday, February 23rd, 2020, from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM, subject to state and local regulations. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Any questions for the Parks Recreation Department, if they can help?
I spoke with Jim today, I believe that a representative of the organization, and Michelle is here, you're getting up to speak. I'd love to hear more about this. Can you come up and?
The man that's before you is a fundraiser put together by URI Kappa Sigma Fraternity. Again, it's going to be conducted on February 23rd with your approval. And Chuck is here to explain more details about what this event is about and examine where the money is going to go.
Well, just name, give your name and address, please.
Sure, Charles Dumont, I'm currently residing in 251 Maryville, Texas. So I'm the president of this Kappa Sigma Fraternity, we're on URI, and we wanted to do a support fund event similar to other polar plunges that have ran through this town and local areas. It, all proceeds would be donated to the Military Heroes Campaign, it's our national campaign. I myself am a cadet, also in the Army ROTC program, so it does mean a little bit. With this event, we would go through every regulation that is normally required and bring safety above the beyond as our number one priority. We have named Narragansett already through our insurance as additionally insured for up to $1,000 general liability for this state. We have EMTs present and potentially police detail. This will be a sober and non-alcoholic event, and it really will just be an in-and-out, hopefully fun, beneficial, but definitely a big and outstanding event.
Thank you, that's, thank you, it sounds very good, thank you for the explanation. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, could you explain, Chuck, a little so as you have to understand in a room full of people that have had both good and bad experiences with URI fraternities, can you explain to me a little bit about the precautions that we take to make sure, you mentioned there's no alcohol at the beach, but was pre-gaming is, I guess, a term for, how do you make sure that, that they aren't drinking ahead of time in coming to the event and intoxicated?
Sure, so the biggest and most blunt answer would be, it's pretty early in the morning and on Sunday.
We see that before.
They might need, they might need.
That's, that's great, so when I was talking over with Steve, right, when I was proposing this idea, I was involved a little bit with the beach day that URI has had over the years. Last year had to be taken away because of how much escalated, this year was successfully reinstated with a lot of effort to make that the case. This polar plunging just really isn't similar at all to something like that, I guess. The idea is that it's, it's more fun, people are going, they're registering beforehand, it's almost treated like a five-day, in that sense. I openly, I've, I've talked to my director of Greek life about this, he doesn't see that being an issue either. For the most part, we just have to trust that, but until, I guess, until it gets into place and becomes a thing, that, to me, as an experienced leader in this community, just, I can't see that being an issue, obviously, that people would be bringing up for an event of this sort.
You have to understand, we, we've had several instances with women's Greek week that they have breakfast really early in the morning and then when families are out there early. Will there be anybody from the university, non-student, that will be at the event to help organize the event and be there on hand that day?
We can definitely have people, for the most part, us as Greek leaders do run events and can handle events and can discipline events, but as I said, Dr. Steve Stein, I've been talking to him, he's the assistant dean of students at URI and the director of Greek life, he plans on attending, so.
And has your particular frat house, have you ever been cited by the university? Are you on campus or off campus?
So we do not have a fraternity house, we have been in good standing here since we started.
Thank you, anyone else?
I got a question for you. Do you now, do you now live or ever live in a boarding house more than four bedrooms? I'll get to the bottom of this. Have fun.
Are there any more questions? I don't, Jim also spoke with, with a charity today and, oh, that.
Yes, I spoke to students today, they sent me all the material, I put it up in the council press.
I asked Jim to bet, that there might be some, some potential opposition in town, so I wanted to make sure the town manager had a really good feeling for the organization.
Yes, you did.
And all of the money is going to this organization, nothing is going to, back to the university.
That's what they've shared us in the letter, the details, where it goes, the checks are made out to the campaign, their website shows where those funds go.
And as Michelle stated, they have all proper insurance?
Yes, ma'am, they do, and it wouldn't surprise me if the beach manager, Mr. William Eckert, if he also didn't swing by the event on that day, just to check on things and make sure that all of the policies and procedures that we need to have in place are being applied and applied.
Will you and Bill be jumping in that day?
I, for myself, sir, no, I cannot speak for Mr. Eckert though.
I heard Steve, I like.
There is always a possibility.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If people wanted to, I don't know. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion approved five to zero. Item 13, item 13 is a motion to approve the request from Narragansett Little League for their annual little date parade to be held on Saturday, day 2nd, 2020, at 10:00 AM, subject to state and legal regulations.
Smooth.
Discussion. We're all familiar with the annual Little League parade, any questions from the council? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion approved five to zero. Wait, just let me get through this one and then you can, right? Item 14 is a motion to adopt the amended resolution establishing the proposed wages for seasonal part-time and temporary employees for fiscal year 2019 to 2020.
Smooth.
All right, discussion. This is for the wages for the, all the employees at the beach. I was just going to see if the council had any interest in the lifeguard captain, assistant lifeguard captain, and veteran lifeguard, high-end range going to $20, because those are people who are older lifeguards who are trying to retain. So if they have any interest in that, I would look for an amendment to increase that, but...
I'll move that.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion on that? All right, so this would increase the range on veteran lifeguard, assistant lifeguard captain, and lifeguard captain to $20. All in favor of that amendment?
Aye.
All opposed, and then on the underlying motion for item number 14, any comments? All right, thank you for all the work there, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion approved five to zero. Okay, Patrick?
Yeah, can we move a request, move 24?
Is there a second for that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion approved five to zero. Item 24 is a motion to designate the Narragansett Community Center as a termination point for the South County Bike Path and Instruct Task, to have to inform the URI and the Department of Transportation of this policy.
Smooth.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes ma'am, I'd like to make an amendment to this recommendation and to insert the word temporary stop termination at the bike path and to instruct the town staff to respectfully request the money so we can continue on the pursuit of looking at the potential of actually connecting to the town beach.
Alright, so we'll take those amendments separately. The first would be to put the word temporary in front of Narragansett Community Center, so we designate, I'm sorry, Narragansett Community as a temporary termination point. So, be in front of termination point. So, is there a second for that amendment?
Second.
Alright, so discussion, that's the, so we're going to have the same kind of thing that we had on the first amendment, so basically on this, we had the, as people, people may remember back in 2013, we had, I guess I'm the only person from the council that's still here from that time, where we asked for DOT to go through Canache Farm and made our request to have the, that bike path go through Canache Farm. This year, we received word from DOT that it was not entertaining, that it was not going to be entertaining those options, and they had a report from consultants in their project readiness review, and they said that the proposed pass through Canache Farm cannot, can be achieved without some form of environmental permitting and relief, and there does not appear to be any justification for such relief, and that there was, that wetlands have lost the structure of the path through Canache Farm would comprise 0.4 to 1.0 acres of wetlands. So, we had a work session to look at what we, what our options were at that point, because the big thing is that DOT is changing their focus from bike paths to roads and bridges, and informed us that there'd be a reduction from eight point three million that was originally going to be used to go through Canache Farm down to three million. So, in light of that, we came together, we heard from some of the neighbors, and the neighbors, we, the option that was left available from the readiness report was essentially the one that's, a modified version, was called modified version four, that had on-road and off-road components. So, the council back in thirteen and continued in nineteen to say that they didn't want this to go through those neighborhoods, on Wanda and Onmore Street. So, in that work session, we talked about this, and so we have a temporary ending point at the community center, because if we ask for permitting of $3 million, it's very clear from the project readiness review that DOT put together, that they want that, they want us, they're not going to do that for a purely Canache Farm path. So, my concern is, so basically, I just reacted to that, that's why we had the work session. If people had said we wanted to go over those roads, then fine, you know, if the work session that was the sentiment, then that would have been the route that we would have gone. So, that was my rationale for this. So, any other comments from the council?
We did, we heard clearly from, from the neighborhood that they did not want the bikes to come down those roads, and I think all five of us agreed that that should not happen. The one thing that I'd like to take a look at is moving back, moving the bike path. I took the opportunity, Rick and I actually walked that Canache Farm, the path the other day, and there are some areas that we do believe we can look at. Rep. McEntee is here, I'd like her to come up as well and speak to this, but she was, before she was rep, when she was on the town council in South Kingstown, they worked very diligently to be able to do small groupings of the bike path to eventually get it to where it is today. And she has informed me that during that period of time, there were many areas that were wetland areas, that South Kingstown was successful in building bridges over to be able to have the bike path continue. She had a discussion with DOT just last week as well, where she has some information, and she's here, I'd like to ask her to come on up and speak to us.
Thank you Jill, thank you members of the council. Carol Hagan-McEntee, State Representative District 33. I live in Wakefield, I'm Narragansett these days. I did speak with Megan Dupree, who was in charge of all the bike paths with DEM. The misconception here is that all the money is coming from DOT, it is not. Two million is coming from DOT, a million, I think it's a million point two, it's a little over another million, is coming from the Green Economy Bond. They have told me at DEM, passing this motion as stated on the agenda would be a detriment to the town of Narragansett. It would hurt any chance of a bike path in the future. The recommendation is, if you can't do the whole bike path because we don't have enough money, and I agree with you, it's unfortunate that the money got taken away, but it did, and if you're reading the papers these days, you know, they even need more money, so, for roads and bridges. But, I was at the rip and cutting for the URI extension of the bike path, and Director Janet Coy, DEM, made a promise that she would make all the efforts of the Green Economy Bond and future Green Economy Bonds to eventually get the bike path all the way to Narragansett Beach and off the roads. So, with that stated by her just recently, what was that, Jim, right about December, I believe that there will be money in the future, so let's not bite off our noses, wipe our face here. I think you could put in a, what Megan Dupree suggested, is this is phase four B, you could apply for, you could break that up into manageable sections. So, they've done it in other towns, they can do four, four B one, four B two, four B three, however, it needs to be done with the money that's appropriated. So, I would suggest that to you guys and your staff, that if you could come up with a plan, even if it's written partially, like wherever it was supposed to go before, behind the community center and down, where was it going to go? It was going to go all the way back in the woods. You could do some of that, you could do, like in South Kingstown, if you go over by Fagan Park, you'll see that there's a little, it directs you off, so you can go play basketball at Fagan Park. So, there's all these little turnoffs on the major bike path. You could do that here as well, have a turnoff into your park so that the kids could go in Little League, or they could play in the playground. I just, I just think to just end it and say, we're not going to take any of this money, maybe beautify that park to some degree, put up some bike racks. You're going to need a kiosk, you're going to have to, to tell people where to go. And we've, like in South Kingstown, all the years we did the different phases, we had a kiosk in every, there's one at the train station, there's one in Wakefield, when you hit Main, uh, Main Street, then there's another one when you hit one away, it used to be Roadie Joe's, now it's something else, that goes across to MacArthur Boulevard. And, and by the way, I do want to mention that I represent MacArthur Boulevard, that whole area. Not one complaint have I ever had of bicyclists on that road. And it's a full-fledged community, it seems to work well. And, but I totally understand how you don't want it to go, you know, people funneling it down certain roads, but I would suggest that you apply for some kind of four B phase one and do something with, and keep the vision alive for the bike path that you eventually want to go all the way to the beach. And I know you all got a, an email from Tim O'Neill, who, it's his father's legacy, this bike path, and, you know, the idea way back when, once you get off the train in Kingston, and you could literally go all the way to Narragansett Beach and stop at restaurants and places all along the way. And I, I just, the community center, like, boom, I don't know, I think you've got to be more forward-thinking, bike paths, walking spaces, the way of the future, people, just look around here, I mean, this town is, proves that a hundred percent. We had a nice weekend, a weekend ago, and all these walking paths were loaded with people, the beach was loaded with people. So, I think the bike path is still a great idea, I, you know, I understand the lack of money, but we have to keep thinking forward, and I think we have a commitment from DEM, which I will continue to work on, and if you pass this motion as written, without the amendment, even with the amendment, I mean, it's still, I think you could do a little more with it if, if you revisit, but it'll make my job much harder to get the money if it's available in the future, and I'm still in the seat to say, why should we give it to Narragansett, they don't want it, you know, it just flies in the face, so I urge you to keep the, the dream alive, it is a jewel of South County despite that. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Durkin. You know what, we're going to talk to the council first, I'm sorry, yes. Anyone from the council?
So, I don't disagree with the fact that, that South Kingston has put in these fingers and their branches off the bike path that they have, that I wouldn't be, I'd be in favor of, from the community center up to the Little League parking lot, to be able to get that area taught, so that, again, it would be a finger destination so that people could go to the park, go to Little League field. I do not want to see it going to behind the Indian and then funneling down the two streets that people from those neighborhoods spoke clearly, that that's not what they want. We could also do a phase, as Carol mentioned, that would be phased into Canache Farm, which is the trail behind the community center. That phase there, whatever money that we have, and however far that they choose to go with what we have, could phase into the Canache Farm area. If it phases in there and in the future, they get more money and they can continue from there, I think maybe at some point, I don't know how long it's going to take, but we could, can keep continuing it that way, and that way there, we're not affecting the neighborhoods, it's not on the street, and I believe that the original plans that were out there, you'll see a powdered blue path line that kind of takes it over that railroad bed that's in there. Now, when you get into the wetlands in those areas, there's a lot of runoff, it does take a lot, eat up a lot of the money, design, engineering, and the state agencies working back and forth to put something together. But, if we're willing to do that, then I'm fine with amending this motion so that we can look at that avenue.
Anyone else from the council?
Sure. I'm agreeing with Jill and Ricky, at least the second part of Ricky's statement, about going through Canache. I appreciate the comments from Rep. McEntee. I've actually heard similar comments from Rep. Tanzi as well. So, it seems like, you know, our reps who speak to people at DEM, speak to people at Department of Transportation, are definitely more optimistic in maybe what's being portrayed from that bike workshop. So, I think there's a real potential to do this the right way and the full path eventually. I would actually like to, I don't know how the process works, but I think we could have a more aggressive amendment than, than to say temporary terminus, because it's not really going to be a terminus at all. I would propose to amend it to say, request funding from the state to complete phase four A and.
Continuing saga.
And begin phase four B, which says, you know, basically, gets the point across at this, these are phases that we're working through, and we have the letter actually from a, that Jim drafted that does just that, that basically says we like to finish what we have, and then, if possible, use the money for design planning and permitting for, I think, phase, or plan, what is it, path three A? Three A or three B? Yeah, so the, that's the more, somewhat more realistic plan to go through the woods. So, that would be my suggestion for an amendment, as opposed to just stopping even temporarily at the community center, because I don't think we had to make any sort of declaration about a terminus after the last phase, so I don't know why there'd be a reason to have to say that publicly now.
Yeah, I agree, the three million dollars should hang onto it. You should keep this nightmare alive, I mean, this dream alive, keep it alive, it's only been 20 years, we have the town fortune, but it's state money, so we need to hang on to it. And I agree with Rick, it should improve from the community center to Kingston Road at least, that's got to be worth three million dollars.
Alright, is there anyone from the public? No, Mr. Durkin and the man in the room, yeah.
So, James Durkin, three second by, I wish I would. Thanks Jill for doing that, that was very nice to get that started. I've worked on the bike paths since, I don't know, maybe 20 years, and it has been a little bit of a nightmare, but it really has been a rewarding nightmare, and I think it would be a travesty to see this last pot just kind of put off. So, it seems like you guys, you understand that, and that's great. The other thing also is DEM is rewriting their regulations, so I'm not sure if anybody knows if they would affect us in a negative way, but I'm sure if we have, it's still a slayer of people on our side, that somehow they could maybe grandfather that fourth phase into the old regulations, you know, because I think those regulations have to pass the general assembly. So, maybe for this last push, a group needs to be, you know, started to do some work, fundraise, do the right things to get this thing done, because it's definitely possible, and it would just be like such a, you know, bright light at the end of the tunnel, end of the path, you know, so, thanks. Bet you guys thought I'd say it at the last.
Yeah. But just, Jimmy, why are you here? You were involved originally, and Mike DeLuca, I chatted with you about this. Just so people know, when they started this bike path, a lot of work went into this, and I think right off the bat, they knew that it was going to be tough to get the destination to the beach because of the way it was set up, and they knew they had to make some land swaps, which was done, we swapped town land with fish and wildlife, there was a lot that went on there. So, again, there are state agencies that work with state agencies to try to put this all together, and I've said it before, this isn't something where you hire a contractor, tell them to get a bulldozer, go in there, and pay them by the hour to do this. There's a lot of time and a lot of cost to this. So, again, we're just not going to piece something together that we're going to say, well, temporary, this is good enough. We want to do this right, and it may take another five, 10, or 15 years, it may, I hope not, but I'd like to see it go off, maybe branch through that Canache Farm area if possible, and continue, and if we can fundraise, that would be fantastic.
Has an environmental impact statement been done? I lost track of the bike path. Has that ever been done for this section four? I think that's something that needs to be done, so if you use the money for that, that takes in that whole environmental, you know, pros and cons and all that stuff, that's what we've always needed for that four.
That was one of the things we discussed at the, at the workshop, using it for environmental studies.
Yeah, so good, thanks.
Hello, my name is Chris Lance, and I'm a teacher at the Pierce School, and I'm here to introduce Jonathan Hanby, who's also here with his sister Rebecca. Together, they wrote a little something, I just want to thank you guys for this consideration, I think removing the, the word termination is a, is a good thing, and before I, before Jonathan begins, one of my favorite things that happens at schools, from time to time I get a knock on my window, and Jonathan and his sister are there, and they're like, ready? The bike comes on, I'm like, give me five minutes, and I get my stuff on, and we ride off, I walk right to Wakefield, they ride to their house, but eventually it ends, we end up on the bike path, so, just anything we can do to continue and agree.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Hanby, and I'm a seventh grader at the Pecamelle Schools. I think we should extend the bike path to Narragansett Town Beach. It would be beneficial to the public and also the kids. It gives them a safe environment to ride to the beach. I, I've been in the, in the summer, I've seen cars near the Narragansett Beach that go through the red lights sometimes, and they also speed down the roads, so the bike path would make it helpful and safer for the kids to get to the beach. Thank you.
Yes.
Here, David, one twenty-five, Kevin. I agree with Rep. McEntee that we should not give up on this. I don't know if it'll take 15 years, I'd like to see it take less than that. I think it's one of the biggest assets in this part of Rhode Island, that the bike path goes all the way up to the train station. goes all the way up to the train station. It's an incredible asset, and I really think we need to extend it to the beach. And I would urge the town council to table this motion, rework it, get it correct before you come and throw it on a piece in this form that it's in now. Bring it back next time and do the right thing. Regarding that, and I'm sorry I missed the meeting at the workshop, I really am not understanding why the neighborhood thinks that it's safer to send kids on bicycles down Narragansett Avenue in the summer with the commercial parking on both sides, with resident beach parking on both sides, how that is any safer than going through the neighborhoods of Wanda and Strathwell. It makes no sense to me at all. Privacy, I understand. That's what this is about, not in my backyard. I think it's an abomination to cater to 20 houses along a street and force families with kids to ride on Narragansett Avenue in the busy summer traffic with no bike lane on either side of the road, other than that that's taken up by parking for commercial and beach and residential use.
Thank you. Yes.
Arlie McLeer, Wanda Street. I think there's some confusion about what the neighbors want and don't want. We have bikes on our street all the time. What the neighbors were objecting to was how it was going to change our neighborhood. They were going to make Wanda Street a one-way street towards the beach. The proposal was to make Otter Street a one-way street away from the beach. It was going to widen our road almost double from what it is now. There were questions whether neighborhood would be able to park on their streets the way they were going to put the bike lane down. There were a buffer on one side, a bike path on the other side, so it would completely change what our streets are now. It's not that we don't want people coming down our street, we don't want our streets to change the way they were proposed. Thank you.
Sometimes I feel like I'm in the presence, hate to say it, of idiots, because we've spent so much time, on committees, discussing all the alternatives, and I feel like trying to wear us down by not even listening to the people. I've looked on that street for 32, 22 years, I have six children, and that whole neighborhood has changed drastically. And we've sat on committees ad nauseam, done testimony, ad nauseam, and it's just getting more and more crowded, and this fantasy of just putting the bike path down the street is gonna make it safer is dead wrong. They speed down the street, it's very, very dangerous, very dangerous. There's never been a traffic study, and it's just, people have this, like, we want to put a feather on our cap, like saying we can get down to the beach. Well, then take it through Canachet Farms, which all the neighbors wanted it anyway, because the kids used to play in Canachet Farms. Now it's like, that part of Narragansett, they're not even using it for recreation. It's sort of like, why can't you just bring it down there? Do the work that's required to make little wooden bridges or whatever over the water. It seems like when you want it, you do it, such as the house that's on Wanda Street, where they have this huge, huge water pond, and they let them build the house right at the edge. And if you want it, you've managed to do it. It's just like with Canachet Farms was built. They have this huge pond that used to be water runoff. They used to be strange through there, but suddenly, there were some shenanigans going on, and we have this huge development there now. I can't understand why you don't want it through Canachet Farms, which were originally, it was supposed to be there by the beginning, and you could still get it down in Hoxie Lane to the beach. And there's parking issues, and all other kinds of issues. So it's just, it's ridiculous that you keep going back to square one when you don't get the anti you want, and it's not getting any better or any safer. It's disgusting, disgusting.
Just to clarify, I think the council's talking about to me exactly that.
Excuse me. Wait, wait, Karen, Karen. Richard and then David.
I just wanna say one quick thing. Wherever this thing terminates, I know where my ashes are going.
Yeah, just, I'll go back to it a little more time, and Friends of Canachet Farm. I present Karen's remarks. Canachet Farm has come a long way in the 13 years that the Friends of Canachet Farm have worked there, and there is much to do there, and I don't know where Karen's coming, maybe she could take a walk around and bite the paths we have there. Look at the historical sites and see other things. Please do not condemn what has gone, what the good things have been going on at Canachet Farm.
Yes.
David Smith, 24 Castle Road in Narragansett. The current State Transportation Improvement Plan enables the town of Narragansett to manage completion of the William C. Reale Light Path to Narragansett Town Beach. It provides up to $3 million in reimbursement to design and construction of the final segment. In the coming months, Rhode Island Vision Plan and the Rhode Island Department of Transportation will undertake a wholesale revision of that State Transportation Improvement Plan. Motion 24 passes, as written. If it is approved, the planners will conclude first, the $3 million can be swept away and used on another bikeway, paving, or more likely, a bridge project. Rideout will be more than happy to move the money elsewhere. Secondly, the town of Narragansett will be seen as not interested in managing the bike path completion. The town's input is that it's already completed, and by the way, the town probably not interested in any other improvements for bicycle safety. What they will not conclude is that the path is actually finished, even though the town of Narragansett says it's already finished. It is the South County Bike Path, by the way, not the Narragansett Bike Path. Certainly, the public will know that it's not finished. Approved course of action is to vote the motion down, period. Stay in communication with Rideout. Present the objections to the proposed alternative route. Press for permitting of the path through Canachet Farm. Demand that the first use of the $3 million be a comprehensive safety, traffic safety analysis centered in Narragansett. But whatever you do, don't throw in the towel, don't pass this motion. If you terminate the bike path at the community center, the existing bike route, marked bike route now goes down Monford Road, Kingston Road at the intersection with Lakewood Drive, by the tennis courts, down Kingston Road onto Narragansett Avenue, which has a parking on both sides of the street, down to Boston Emperor. That is not a safe path. The intersection of Monford Road and Kingston Road is unsafe for most motorists. It's chaotic, and you don't want bicyclists being directed down that way. You also have a new path built by the community, by the primary middle school and high school, and also connecting to, you know, to Central Street, and that connects down Prospect Avenue to the Louisville Field. Connect that to the end of the bike path, please. You don't want two unfinished bike paths in the town. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Members of the town council, I'm concerned that there is a misunderstanding. The new sign at the end of the South County Bike Path Project 4 says, "Discount Bikes", not abandon the completion of the South County Bike Path at the Narragansett Community Center. This is not the end of the bike path, it is the beginning of Phase 4B, which completes the bike path to the south end of Narragansett Town Beach, which has been the goal of the bike path since the 1980s. In 2016, when David Smith and I worked with the town to seek the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management Green Economy Bond of $750,000 for Phase 4A, which went from the current terminus of the bike path on Monford Road, around the rear of the school playground and the playfield to the community center, we considered that one quarter mile to be a connector. Phase 4A took the pedestrian and bicycle traffic off Monford Road in front of the school and connected it to the parking lot at the community center. Safety and parking were the two goals. We asked the town manager, the director parks and recreation, the police chief, the director of public works, and the superintendent of schools if this section was a good idea. They all agreed. In 2016, it was the next step to the completion of the bike path to the beach. Now it's time to plan the last three-quarter mile of the South County Bike Path. The funding has been reduced to $3 million. The $3 million reimbursement should not be returned to the Rhode Island Department of Transportation with the inscription on the card saying, "You can use this money somewhere else in the state, Narragansett doesn't want it." Instead, a letter needs to be sent to Rideout saying this amount and more is needed. The plan that Rideout ordered to take the bike path from Wanda Street is not considered safe by the residents, and we need help finding another safe way for pedestrians and bicyclists to get from the community center to the beach. The Narragansett response to Rideout should also say that the town would like to spend a certain portion of that $3 million to hire a traffic safety engineer to help in this process. The safety of thousands of people who ride or walk this path is at stake. 30,000 annual trips at Monford Road, as determined by the Rhode Island Department of Planning in 2017, and that was before the URR connector and Phase 4A behind the elementary school were completed. When the residents of Schoolhouse Road objected to the South County Bike Path coming down their street for safety reasons, another path through the land that had been swatted with the town was arranged. People kept talking, and a solution was worked out. The Narragansett Town staff and the Narragansett Town Council need to send a letter to DOT saying they accept the $3 million reimbursement, and you need to work in negotiation to find a solution that is acceptable to the residents that completes the South County Bike Path to the Narragansett Town Beach, where the final sign can read, "The journey is finished, discount your bikes here." Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, and then Susan?
Susan Iman Russo, West Bay Drive. I support keeping the funds here in town, working on a solution to getting this bike path. It's a good reminder that this is not just a Narragansett bike path, it's a South County bike path. And to turn away funds at our state taxes, we contribute to this fund. Granted, we would have liked the whole amount, but we should not be returning $3 million, especially when we have legislators and representatives working with us. So I think treating it as basis to use this money, there's always a way to order it. So I support keeping the funds and completing this bike path.
Matt Bazzoni, Narragansett Bikes up on the north end, and so, yeah, I just, you know, being in the industry and watching the process of this, it's more, it's less of a nightmare than embarrassing to watch how difficult the process has been, and I know there's been a lot of effort going into it for years, but opening the store, purchasing the store in 2007, it was a conversation that we were talking to customers about at that point, and it still draws this really gap for a lot of people to just get, even from this side, to get to the Wayfield or to get to the, to the Constance Station. It is such a gem, and it's, it's an incredible asset for the town, and I think it's a really important piece to continue to pursue. Canachet Farm is the ideal spot. When you go through there, we, we spent a lot of time back there, whether it's on hiking, you know, things with the kids and stuff like that, it really is an ideal, amazing way to get to the town beach. And we have so many customers, and the town has obviously become very much a tourist place in the summertime, and they always ask us how to get to the, to the bike path, and it is, it is the most challenging process to get people from where we are, and I recognize 1A has its bike road and everything, but even if they were willing to drive down, it's, you gotta take them away from the town beach, and take them away from the ocean to just get to the bike path, because from a family standpoint, it's, think of it going the other direction, I mean, they don't, there's no place to go from 1A to get to Monford, you know, and so it's, yeah, it's a vital piece to the, to the community, and I think it's been an incredible asset. You know, it's just this kind of odd, embarrassing head to head moment, so I appreciate the consideration of changing the amendments and not making it a termination at the center, so, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, so this amendment is, uh, due.
Teresa Tansy, the other state rep for Narragansett. You guys have heard me speak on this dozens of times, so I'm not gonna go into the detail that I usually do, simply saying this must go to the beach. Rosemary and David both stated it beautifully, it's not the end, it's the beginning. It's meant to go to the beach from the beginning, and it is, it's imperative that it does. We need to keep that money to explore an off-road design. I think we hear that loud and clear over and over again. We need to use that money for the environmental feasibility study through Canachet Farm, down Hoxie Lane, and it may be for B, it may be for C, it may be for D, it may take us 15 years, but that's, that's not of importance. It's a process, and it'll take as long as it takes, and we need to do this right, this is a legacy item. This is the South County Bike Path, and it matters not just to those of us who are in elected office now, who are residents of Narragansett now, this is a legacy for the entirety of the state, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, so the first amendment was adding the word temporary for the termination point.
What, I just wanted to ask Mark, what do you recommend to do? It looks like we have at least four people that wanna change it and add additional rubbish. What, what specific ones?
Communities and a termination, or temporary. Communities and the beginning of Phase 4 of South County.
I just wanna say one quick thing. So I have this item prepared and ready to go. It was submitted to be on this agenda, and that was to approve town manager's letter, which was to request the $3 million from the state and to use that money for permitting everything we're talking about tonight, we all saw the draft. I mean, Terry has the letter, and, you know, we can put it up on two weeks. It has the letter attached, everyone can see it beforehand. Why don't just vote it down in two weeks?
So you guys can go ahead and vote down the motion, then put on the Jesse's item in two weeks. That probably makes the most sense, as the way people want it.
I was going to ask Mark if we could do that tonight. We have Jim's draft letter that I think...
Well, that needs to be fixed, Joe. There's still problems with that letter.
I understand, but I wanted to find out for a split second what he thinks we should do.
I think the prudent thing to do would be to step back, take a look at the letter, revise it, and come back in a couple of weeks and do it right.
Okay.
All right, so then we, if you might withdraw your amendments then?
Yes, withdraw those.
And withdraw the second?
And the second.
All right, so we're going to leave underlying, in fact, just the underlying motion. So as I said, this started back in 2013. We have a letter here from Dean Hoxley. It talks about the options that we looked at in 2013. It talks about the on-road portions through the neighborhood. It talks about the Tansy Path, and it talks about the Brady Path. Many of you may not know what all that is in the room, but that was the discussion point. The council at the time said they wanted to go with the Tansy Path, right? That's what the town has advocated for. And as the Green Energy Bond is going on, the Canachia Farm path, so it didn't intrude on the people in the neighborhoods, right? In the middle of this year, we received word from DOT, right? We had advocated, and they basically said, they didn't express reluctance, they rejected, right? They rejected the option of going that way. They reduced significantly the amount, more than half the amount they put into, they cut it by more than half, and said to us that Alternatives 1, 2, this actually was from their consultant report, they read this report. Alternatives 1, 2, 3, 3A, 4, and 5 do not satisfy the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer criteria nor the CRMC variance requirements. All those versions are all the Canachia Farm versions. What they said about the $3 million was, VHB, which is the consultant, recommends the proponent in Road Rideout explore developing a modified version of Alternative 4. Right, we're talking about that tonight, now called Modified Alternative 4. This version moves the path a minor distance to the east near the community center to create a bike path with on-road and off-road components. Modified Alternative 4 could utilize a former railroad abankment north of the community center to reach Gray Memorial Field, then passing through the field to Strathmore Road, crossing some of Strathmore Road and proceeding east along Wanda Street and/or Ahma Street as on-road bicycle lanes or shared use paths to the town pumping station property. Also, new sidewalk could be installed along one side of Wanda Street and/or Ahma Street for pedestrian users. So what they've said to us is, the permitting money, the $3 million, they are not going to use that purely for a Canachia Farm-only path. So I was just trying to be practical here. It's been six years, and I said a temporary termination would be at this point based on what I had read, what they communicated to us. And what we're doing now is we're basically just sending the 2013 letter again. So, all in favor? Aye, all opposed. Motion fails, 1 to 4. Item number 15, a motion to review and discuss the hazard... Go ahead, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of Town Council. I'm Jill Sabo with the Planning Department, presenting to you tonight the 2019 progress report for the town's hazard mitigation plan. As you may recall, in January of 2019, the council approved the town's hazard mitigation plan, which is officially referred to as the Strategy for Reducing Risks from Natural Hazards in Narragansett, Rhode Island. The plan was drafted through the local hazard mitigation committee, which is comprised of Town Department heads, the town manager, police chief, fire chief, DPW, director and deputy director, the planning director, engineer, IT, building inspections, and RE/MO reps. It was also crafted through public participation, including a survey, a public workshop, as well as opportunities to speak at the planning board, and it was advertised through media, you know, our website, the local newspapers, and social media. In the plan, 19 action items were identified to be addressed over the next five years. This is the first progress report on those five years and of those 19 action items. The town actually has several updates. I'd just like to run through them briefly. I know they're in your report, but for the benefit of everyone here. Action item number five, I won't go through, by the way, I won't go through all 19, I'm only going to go through the ones with the updates. So action item number five is the floodproofing pump stations. So the town engineering department has applied for funding through FEMA to reinforce and secure the storm manhole covers in the Scarborough wastewater treatment facility in the event of a severe coastal storm. That funding, actually, the deadline for it is January of this year, and we should know by June, and hopefully by December they'll be in the board. That information will apply a few times here. Action item seven, which is the Scarborough wastewater groin rehabilitation. You may recall in 2019, we thought we were going to be able to get funding through FEMA for that, when we found out that the rehab of the jetty didn't qualify for the hazard mitigation funding. The engineering department is actually currently preparing an application for the Green Economy Bond, and that will be submitted later this month. Action item eight, which is the underground utilities and fire alarm communications upgrade. The town's fire alarm cable and equipment system is currently undergoing a conversion to wireless radio signaling. This is a five-year CIP project, which started in September of 2019, so subsequent phases will occur over the next five years. Action item 11, causeways. A local community group, the Harbor Island Improvement Association, privately contracted to install tidal gauges in Long Cove, Champlin Cove, and at the port of Galley to understand the tidal changes in those two coves, Long and Champlin. The town, through the planning department, has applied for FEMA grant funding for a concept study to identify alternatives for improving the causeway to Harbor Island, and has incorporated this study in its application. And action item 19, stormwater projects. The Department of Public Works has applied for FEMA funds to rebuild the culvert at Spring Brook in Bonnet Shores, and they have also applied for funding through Rideout to install stormwater BMPs on Indian Trail next to Narrow River. The town is required to complete this yearly progress report and present it to the planning board and the town council. On January 7th of this year, the planning board unanimously accepted this report and recommended that the town council review, accept, and place on file. I'm available for questions.
So tonight is a discussion, and then I guess the next meeting, we would actually accept it and place on file, is that correct? If this is review and discuss?
It says review and discuss, it does not say place on file?
Yeah. That's fine, within two weeks, we can just say place on file if we have the discussion here.
Would it be possible to amend it to place on file? Because our deadline is actually February 1st. I believe it says both. I don't have to...
Okay, usually it says receive and place on file at the beginning. Okay, so we're fine. Yep, good. Sorry about that. Any comments or questions from the council? You already done that. Any place, anybody from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved, 5 to 0. Item 16 is a motion to read, pass, and adopt as a second reading an amendment of Chapter 731 of the Code of Amendments of the Town and Area of the Rhode Island entitled Zoning Specifically Text Revisions in Section 4.7 Special Flood Hazard Overlay District.
Simult.
This is a second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion approved, 5 to 0. We're going to take a five-minute break. All right, everybody, and we'll come back to item 17. All right, item 17 is a motion to authorize the town manager to sign the net metering credit sales agreement with founders Homestead Farms Solar LLC and the established certificates for founders Homestead Farms Solar LLC and University Solar LLC.
Simult.
All right, any comments from the council? Comments from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved, 5 to 0. 18 is a motion to approve the restoration work at Kenny App Water Division Office to be completed by App for Restoration Company Incorporated, the amount of $34,893.
Simult.
Second.
Discussion. Anyone from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved, 5 to 0. Item 19 is a motion to approve the filling of the position of heavy equipment operator in any subsequent vacancies due to a resignation.
Simult.
Second.
Discussion. This is a resignation of the Public Works Department. Any comments from the council? Public? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved, 5 to 0. Item 20 is a motion to appoint two individuals to the juvenile hearing board with one two-year term ending 11, 1-2021, and one three-year term ending 11, 1-2022.
Simult.
Second.
Is there a specific person for the two-year term?
Yeah, Tony Jones.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion approved, 5 to 0. Is there an appointment for the three-year term?
Sure. Erica, I don't have your last name, I'm sorry.
All right, is there a second for that?
I'll go for Erica, I don't have her last name, yes.
Is there a second? Anyone?
Oh, yes, I was going to put forth, my strongest recommendation was for Kathy Gardner, who sits on the Narragansett Prevention Partnership Board, put me in the Police Department, and she also managed a grant that would be used for enforcement. Just tell her about the Police Department, I think she would be a great fit, I was wondering if that, I'll take it.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion?
Is this the second one?
So this is Erica, what's Erica's last name? Terry, could you...
Distorino.
I'd like to also, Kathy Gardner.
So Erica is up, so we can vote on that or discuss it if people have further discussion.
Mr. Chief's recommendation, we should go with it.
So we have Erica Pesturino, all in favor of that?
No.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, 4 to 1. Did you want to make another nomination?
That's two.
Okay. All right, number 21 is a motion to approve the one-year contract extension for wastewater laboratory analysis with premier laboratory division of microback glass incorporated at the quoted bid prices and rates under the same terms and conditions as the original contract.
Simult.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved, 5 to 0. Just wait one second. Item number 22 is a motion to award the bid for tax sale title search to lowest bidder Taffet McSally LLP at the quoted bid prices $89 per title exam, $100 per collector's deed, and $8 per postage notice for the 2020 tax sale.
Simult.
Second.
Discussion. Any comments from the council? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion approved, 5 to 0. So we had moved up items 23 and 24, so that gets us to our open forum portion of the meeting, where people can comment on issues regarding what's going on in the community. We ask that people keep their comments to the three-minute time period.
Matt, many people have asked me if I could have Mark give a summary of what occurred at the hearing for the lawsuits of the library last Friday. So if you could do that, then if you could also maybe outline what's going to be happening on this topic over the next couple of weeks.
This past Friday, excuse me, this past Friday, we were in court on the two lawsuits, one brought by Lovey Library at All versus the Town Council, and the other one, the town. If you recall, shortly after the lawsuits were filed, a temporary restraining order was filed, and in lieu of that hearing, we agreed to enter into a consent agreement, not to transfer title until there was some resolution by agreement or by the court. On Friday, we, our, the town council and the town's motion to dismiss, both those lawsuits were heard, and the court ruled on the Lovey Library at All in favor of the plaintiffs, and our motion failed. The court has taken the motion to dismiss the Gilbane matter under advisement and has not issued a ruling on that. So next steps are, this Friday at 8:45, I suspect it'll be in chambers, but there's a status conference for the lawyers to discuss the timing of when the consent agreement, a final decision will be made on that. We're asking to be relieved from those obligations and be allowed to transfer the title. So there'll be a hearing on that, and so that status conference will lay out the next steps, whether there's going to be discovery or what the timetable is going to be. That happens Friday. A week from today, the town will be in court on the Susan Cicilline Bonanno lawsuit in which the town failed to recognize the petition as being valid, you remember, or that petition being one that wanted to undo basically the offering of sale via petition. That lawsuit will be heard a week from today, so we'll be arguing that suit. I think that brings us to date.
Thank you. So the judge didn't make any rulings, just really kind of verbally kicked the can down the road?
Yeah, I mean, the motion to dismiss, you know, we argued standing, and we argued that it should be basically dismissed. It's a tough burden, and we lost that. So the next hearing at some point will be on whether we'll be free to transfer that, and then however that's decided, eventually there'll be a full-blown trial on the matter. So that's kind of the next step.
Thank you. Is there anyone related to just the council? Rosemary, and then Sam.
Rosemary Smith, 24 Castle Road. I want to invite you and the members of the community, and to anyone in the state of Rhode Island, to the Winter Speaker Series on Pediclimb Skid, Presentations on the Environment and the History of the Narrow River Watershed. And they take place during the winter months on the last Sunday of January, February, and March. They take place from 1 to 3 o'clock at the Narragansett Town Library, and this is our ninth year in having these presentations. This year, the first one will be on January 26, and it's 50 years of protecting and preserving the Narrow River and its watershed, and it will be done with a panel of the NRPA board, and they will talk about their challenges and their future. That one, we ask people to pre-register before they come to the library for those meetings, and that one was registered in full as of two weeks ago. So I'm sorry, I have to say, unless you're on that list or on a waiting list, there's no more space at the library. The second one is February 23, and it's called the Rhode Island Bear Story from Colonial Prosecu... persecution, not prosecution, I'm sorry, too backyard of Perth. And it's going to be given by the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management, Wildlife Specialist Mary Gannon, and she's going to talk about issues of wildlife in the watershed, and she will talk about the bear incident that took place at Camp Barnum. The third one is March 29, and it's Camp Barnum and the Rhode Island Coastal Defenses, and it will be given by Master Sergeant James Loughler, who's recently retired from the National Guard, and he'll explain how Camp Barnum... retired from the National Guard, and he'll explain how Camp Barnum, near the mouth of Narrow River, played an important role in the defense of the Rhode Island coast during World War Two. And these, these presentations are, you know, presented in collaboration with the South County Museum, the Friends of Tenochtitlán Farm, Narrow River Preservation Association, and the Narragansett Library, and with funding from Trio Restaurant, so I have the flyers, I'd like to have the clerk, please pass them to you, and except for the first one, we'd love to see you, okay, thank you.
Rosemary, you might want to talk to Parks, Rec, and Youth Community Center, we have an overflow, we have so many people that have, rather than limiting it, there's certainly lots.
It's Sunday afternoon, one to three, I have not seen the Parks or Recs open during that time, and this is free to us.
No, they could be open, they could be open there as well.
And free?
Check it out with Steve, yeah.
Well, I think we're set where we are for this year, but thank you for the suggestion, I appreciate it.
Stay on your house in Narragansett, I just, just wanna relieve some frustration I have, read the letters to the editor, and all I hear is this, this organization, OLS, is withholding a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars because we have a funding problem, Narragansett has a funding problem. You know, I heard that we gave them, they had a six-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand dollar surplus, then I hear Councilman Lewis said that the last five years, they've had these thousands of dollars of surplus money, and then this organization says, we have a funding problem. Obviously, that criteria is really messed up, to say they have a funding problem, we overfunded the library unbelievably, and now they say we have a funding problem. When I see that, I just lose confidence in any professional analysis or billing, ability to carry on any analysis concerning money. It really is upsetting, and I read this often, hear about it often, and I get upset, therefore I have to come up here and let you know I'm upset when I see that, I lose confidence that we're dealing with some non-professional people out there, thank you.
Thank you, you, and then Sue, you and then Sue, yeah?
Good evening, my name is Carol, I'm at the Narragansett, I'm here as Ted DiStefano, who was not able to be here tonight, and I'd agree to read his letter that was published in the Narragansett Times on January fifteenth.
It's what it doesn't want, right? Go ahead.
First, let me explain the background of the one hundred eighty-one thousand dollars, eight, one hundred eighty-one thousand nine hundred fifty-nine dollars. The state of Rhode Island gives grants to libraries throughout the state, if cities and towns simply keep on giving the libraries the same budgetary amount that they did the year before. In other words, the state clearly doesn't want libraries to be underfunded, the state wants them to be level-funded, meaning that the level of the funding in the present year must be the same as the year before. Narragansett has done this for years for our wonderful library, it was a simple failed proof process until the anti-library trio led by Council President Matthew Mannix and assisted by Consuls Rick Lima and Jill Lawler, decided to slash the library budget to the point of threatening the future of our library. Just view the Narragansett Town Council meeting of January sixth, twenty twenty, on YouTube, and you will hear the Narragansett resident, Ms. Carleen Town, say this to the trio, things like this, "How are you going to ensure that the library, library will be able to remain open?" She also added, asked how this anti-library trio led by Mannix plans to correct the terrible disservice that they have done to our library. I don't recall hearing a response from Mannix or his cohorts on this. On YouTube, you will also hear our town manager, James Tierney, say that he did not appeal the loss of the one hundred eighty-one thousand nine hundred fifty-nine dollars in the state funds because he thought it would be futile, a futile exercise. Very sad indeed. Now the town is out one hundred eighty-one thousand nine hundred fifty-nine dollars in state funding and its future ability to regain the trust of the state of Rhode Island, and obtaining future state funding is quite dubious, especially with the council we have in place led by Mannix. To further compound this disaster, after resident Ms. Carleen Town took the preparers of the town budget to task for lying to the taxpayers and the state by putting one hundred eighty-one thousand nine hundred fifty-nine dollars in our town budget as income, knowing full well that it was no longer available to us, Mannix laughed softly in answer, "No one lied in the budget, the budget is a plan."
I recognize Sue Bush, you're not recognized, Sue Bush, please, you're not recognized. Thank you, Sue, I said Sue Bush, thank you.
Before we get any further on this, one thing I'm not gonna allow is people to mislead anybody on what's going on, so I'm gonna answer Mr. DiStefano's view of level funding as misleading and non-factual. On ten eleven nineteen, the town was notified by OLS that if the library board authorized the transfer of four hundred and fourteen thousand dollars from their surplus money, taxpayer money, to the town council, the town would turn around, appropriate the four hundred and fourteen thousand back to the library, and this would satisfy OLS requirements of level funding, and the library would get its one hundred and eighty-one thousand in state aid. Let's make that clear throughout the town, this council did not deny the funds to the people of this town. Library Board, had your opportunity, and you didn't follow through.
All right, Sue, go ahead.
Sue Bush, sixty-five Robinson Street, little pivot here, topic pivot, I had listened to some public comments from last town council meeting, and I just felt that I needed to respond to them. One was commentary about public race events, particularly those run by professional organizations, and I would just like to say that we, that, I am the secretary of the Narragansett Historical Society, and have been for many years, and we work with Gray Matter Marketing on the Ocean Road ten K, that is a fantastic award-winning race, held in October, and it brings in participants from New York, Connecticut, Massachusetts, the whole region, they come for the whole weekend, they spend the night, or two, and they use our restaurants, and they have a great time. I would venture to say that if, if we were running that race year after year, it maybe would have lasted two years, but Gray Matter Marketing's a professional group, they know what they're doing, they've got the capabilities, the professional staff, to keep this race going and make it a real robust, exciting event, so I would just like to sort of stand up for those professional organizations, particularly Gray Matter Marketing, they've been a fantastic partner of ours, and we completely appreciate this partnership we've had ongoing with them, that's the biggest chunk of money we receive, we're completely funded by membership, so we really appreciate that partnership, I just wanted to, to put that out there. The other comment I heard was from Councilmember Pew, who mentioned that he would like to see more happening with regards to Native Americans and so on, and I'd just like to let you know, we try to do about one an, on average a year with regards to the Narragansett Indians and the Native Americans in the region, so I just wanted to make you aware of that, and we have a really exciting event coming up in April, you all might have heard of Tarzan Brown, that was Tarzan Brown, who was a Narragansett Indian who won the Boston Marathon twice, and represented the US in the nineteen thirty-six Olympics in Berlin, which was pretty controversial at the time, and a relative of his is giving a talk about him on April fourteenth, so right around Boston Marathon time, so I just wanted to make you aware of those, thanks, thank you very much.
All right, I agree, and then Richard.
Ellen Karmen, one zero nine West Woodland Street, I will continue with Mr. DiStefano's letter from January fifteenth, twenty twenty, I will start with, in regards to Mannix laughed softly in answer, "No one lied in the budget, the budget is a plan, such an astounding answer needs some clarification." Investopedia defines the word budget as estimation of revenue and expenses, et cetera. The word estimation, however, gives no wiggle room for putting into the budget an item of income which is clearly and unequivocally not available. I do not know how, how many state and or federal agencies receive a copy of our budget, but I would certainly be most concerned that such a large item of income, one hundred and eighty-one thousand nine hundred fifty-nine dollars, is not included in our budget, when it seems virtually impossible that that amount would not be, would be realized. One other thought about the meeting of January sixth, Consular Jesse Pew put forward a motion to publish the minutes of a certain executive session meetings concerning the sale of real estate that houses pure liquors. Stunningly, the council voted three to two to release the minutes, when that happened, Mannix looked at Consular Lima and said, "Is that your vote?" Lima then changed his vote to abstain, and the motion to release the secret session meetings on the sale of the liquor store fair. I am told by legal authorities that this is a total improper, under proper rules of order, so this is my last music, it's now the time to install an official monitor to observe all of our meetings, to ensure that they are conducted in a totally legal and ethical fashion. Ted DiStefano, Narragansett.
Richard, yes?
First part is a review, Humpty Dumpty sat on, Humpty Dumpty had a big fall, all the king's horses and all the king's men couldn't put Humpty Dumpty back together again. Now, all the good wishes about the library, all the good things that a library does, all the vituperation we've heard for years, all the mendacity we've heard, all of the folly that one thinks one can have a world-class, state-of-the-art library in a forty-year-old grocery store. All of these will not change the physical and fiscal reality. Not all the money in the world will make the connection of three wholly separate units a success, and thank God we have three people who recognize this, because this is reality, and reality ultimately wins out.
Carleen, and then Mr. Karmen.
Carleen Town, Woodhill Road, this is an email I sent to Mark Davis last week with CCs to the five council members and Mr. Jim Tierney. Dear Mr. Davis, I have read the rules and procedures for the Narragansett Town Council meetings, and would like to specifically address item number nine, it reads, "These are items which the council will discuss individually in the order listed on the agenda. After the council has discussed an item on the agenda, the council president will close the council discussion and will inquire if any citizen wishes to be heard on the matter. It clearly states that the public has the right to speak on any motion. I have been in the audience on many occasions when we have been denied that right. A glaring example of that occurred at the January sixth meeting. On Jesse's motion to unseal the executive session minutes, it was striking to me that Matt only allowed comments from other counselors, you, and Terry Donovan. Even Jill said she wanted to hear comments from the audience, but Matt just steamrolled over her and did not allow any public comment. In fairness to you, I must tell you that I have filed a complaint with the AG's office over this matter, but I don't know if it comes under its purview. Even Phil Cazalino, the reporter for the Narragansett Times, reported in his article on January seventeenth that this is clearly against the rules for town council meetings. As legal counsel for the town council, I believe it is your responsibility to advise the council when it is breaking its own rules and regulations. Clearly, you have not done that on numerous occasions, when I have witnessed Matt push a vote through without any public comment, even when his co-counselors and members of the audience have indicated that others wanted to speak. There is nothing in the rules and regulate procedures that gives the town council president the right to ignore public comment on any motion, so please do your job and advise the council when it's breaking its own rules. Jesse replied to my email last week, and Mr. Davis replied last night, no one else did. Mr. Davis's reply was, "I can assure you that all town council members understand the rules and procedures, it is my responsibility to advise, I do not have the power or authority to control their decisions," end of quote. Following Mr. Davis's logic is like saying, "We don't need a police department because we are all aware that it is against the law to commit a crime." Matt wants to blame every controversy on the library, this is not a library issue, but a blow to democracy, this is an issue of our First Amendment rights being taken away from us, folks, take heed, your right to be heard is being taken away by this town council, and in particular, Matt Mannix, don't sit back, fight for democracy, fight for your First Amendment rights, force the town council to obey its own rules, force the town solicitor to do the job we taxpayers are paying him for, that is, to advise the town council when it is not following its own rules, thank you.
Yes, that is a joke, if you think you haven't had an opportunity to speak in the last year, that is a joke, that is a joke.
They gotta bring a side. Okay, I got a couple of questions for you, and I have a disagreement with Mr. Pew especially because this is all over town, and you want to run our town, but you can't even pay your own federal bills? Do you have anything to say?
Director comments to me, yes.
Does he have anything to say?
What do you, what's your?
He takes up like, this thing that let us all over town, but I'm not paying federal income tax fees, it owes thirty-three thousand dollars, how can you be in charge of our town? Sixteen thousand people.
I'll speak on this.
No, you don't have to speak on it, I'm talking to him, I don't.
Why can't you speak on it?
Well, I'm, I'm. No, I'm not done. So the other, the other thing I have to say, if you finish what I'm done, we, the people of Narragansett are paying lawyers, right, who are, you people are named in a lawsuit, and we're paying lawyers to be your attorneys, and you're sitting with the libidians, how do you get, how do you, what is that, that's like, she wants to say something about that, that's like hitting a kid with a car, and then sitting with the kid's parents, what is that, you, Murray, what are you, like the puppet, what are you, a puppet, why don't you get on the, why don't you get with the local people?
I support the library.
Oh, I don't care, do you support the town?
I support the bond issue.
Do you support the town?
I got, I got a charge for the people to bring us the cheapest and most successful library in the town.
No, you don't, and I'm not.
Well, no, no, when you sit up here, why don't you run, you sit up here, and then you, I'll do what you want to do.
I'm gonna run, because I am my own man, I'm not this.
Well, whatever.
I'm not a puppet, why don't you get over there where you belong, I know you're not a native, but, you know, we'll call you a local, but, I mean, you're sitting with the library people, what is the matter with you, we're paying.
I am, I'm sitting on the library side.
Well, why don't you give us money back, we're paying our attorneys, and you, I hear you owe money in Maine, what's up with that, and you owe money to the place? It is slanderous, you slander these people, you call him Lima, her lawyer, him Mannix, you call him Mr. Pew, and him missed the money, what's up with that, and you call him liar, what's with the, you know, I sit home and I watch this, and I can't believe you people, I can't believe it, how you think you can run again, I don't know how you I don't know how you know. I think you should resign. I really do. I think you've pulled the wool over everyone in this town ties long enough. So you want to answer to me or not?
So where were you? How come you weren't at the court?
I didn't have to be at the court. I--
Where do you have the court?
I have my support right here.
Thank you.
Yeah, three minutes.
I don't get it.
I'll make a couple of quick comments. I do not owe money in Maine, so I'm not sure about that one. I can see you're not a fan. After this, we can--
You owe all the people living here for their toll of town.
So I'll address this. So this was actually addressed on Facebook. It was posted by a fake Facebook account. But yeah, I do owe money in taxes for previous years. I've been, me and my wife have been in installment plan for that. We've made those payments over the last few years. We did have an issue last year with an installment plan basically renewing, and the auto debit stopped taking. So we did miss a few payments. We have resolved that issue and we're back in the plan. So that's basically the full story there. My opinion is that personal financial issue is not really relevant in terms of my ability to serve the council in terms of people in town. I do plan on continuing to serve in the council for as long as the people want me to, and plan on running for reelection in the fall. So that's the story. Appreciate you bringing it up, Mr. Coombs. And if anyone has questions for me about it, happy to answer them, but not much more to it. So thank you.
Okay, I'm delinquent on my taxes. This is a confessional, okay? I had a mortgage here. I got a new mortgage, and the new mortgage company didn't send the escrow, so I owe the town in Narragansett $750. And I got two notices, delinquent notices, and that's being taken care of by the mortgage company. So if you saw, you know, a late property tax bill by me, then I'm fessing up now. Also, my dog isn't registered. I think we should get it out of this. I know this is sporadic and it's, you know, it's rogue. If I am a rogue councilman, I won't register that dog tomorrow, period. I think that's it. But if I do have other infractions, I will let you know. This is pure political nonsense.
Susan Emmerusso, West Bay Drive. Trying to get composure after that confession, so I guess confession's good for the soul. I was in the audience at the last town council meeting, and I did have my hand up, and we were not called on, and there were many others, so that is a fact, and it was against the rules. But what I wanted to talk about was, I think it was even a month ago, there was a woman who was talking regards to the library, the hot topic, and her contention was, "Well, I have a computer, I have Netflix, so I'm all set. We don't really need a library. You know, I'm all set." And this is the mentality that I find is growing, getting support from certain members. And I think it's very disheartening, because we should be committed to building a community, because if we start down this road of, okay, and another suggestion was, "Let's tax the library for the people who use the library." Well, where is this going to end? You know, we could say, "I don't use the beach, so I don't want to pay for the lifeguards." The people who use the beach are going to pay for the lifeguards. I never drive down that road, you know? If it snows, figure out how to pay for it, or you pay extra because your road's longer than my road. I mean, we're going down this path of a lack of community, a lack of togetherness, and it's just very disheartening. And now we're bringing out background checks that are unsubstantiated, and we're not following rules, people getting cut off. And people want to be heard, you know? I also brought up the fact that we passed a bond issue, and you can't understand why people are upset. You don't get to pick and choose what part of an election or a voting process that happens on a particular day to pick out the parts that, no, this is how it is. No, people change their mind. People could have changed their minds about you. Maybe none of you belong up there. Who knows? Where would it start? You have an election, you wrote on a bond, the issue stands, it gets passed, it gets used. This is the only bond issue in 20 years in Narragansett that has not gotten spent, and that speaks volumes. And I just think that instead of saying, like, "I don't want to pay for this, I don't want to pay for that, you need to be taxed because you use this or you use that more," that's going down the wrong road. And it really, you know, we heard talk about 2020, it's going to start at the top. I have not seen this start at the top yet. We really need to listen to what people are saying. People want to be heard, people want to send emails and get a response. They don't want to have it like be this vacant thing. You can't get solutions if you can't communicate back and forth. You don't need to agree all the time, but you need to communicate and start thinking of us as united community instead of separately.
Is there anyone else? All right, seeing none, a motion to adjourn.
Let me get this signed.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved 5 to 0.